Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 14th Virtual Meeting and Public Hearing of the Penn Field Planning Board. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Governor's Executive Orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the Open Meetings Law. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Pennfield's website, www.pennfield.org, and on the Town of Pennfield's Government Access Channel 1303. The meeting will also be later transcribed. If you would like to address the Board on any public hearing matter, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each matter after the Board responds to the applicant's presentation with its questions and concerns. You can participate by phone at (585) 340-8771, or by electronic submission at www.pennfield.org, and on the home screen, you can click on Live Meeting Video, and you can submit your comments electronically that way. If you'd like to speak to an application again, dial (340) 8771. I will also repeat these instructions as we go along, as long as I remember them, and I'm sure someone will remind me. So this is the first time we're doing this, so everyone, please be patient with us as we work through this. It's remarkably complicated, and we're going to begin with Lori Gray calling the roll. So Lori, if you're here.
I'm here.
Go ahead. All right.
Hetske?
Here.
Bastian?
Here.
Canauer?
Here.
Tidings?
Tidings, here.
Burton?
Here.
Nurse Singer?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
O'Connor?
O'Connor, here.
Wyshar?
Wyshar, here.
And Gray, here.
Okay, and just to reiterate, if we call for votes or rolls, if we could all just, when our name is called, "Hetske, here," you know, just say your last name and then your vote, and raise your hand or give a thumbs down, whatever your vote's going to be. Okay, we have...
AJ?
Yes?
I was unmuted, but I am here. I realized you couldn't hear me.
Okay, great, thanks. Bill Bastian is here, for the record.
But the backup plan of the hand up worked in the video acknowledgements.
Yes.
Okay.
See, that's why we have these redundancies. Okay, we have meeting minutes from April 30th, the last work session, and hopefully everyone has had an opportunity to review them, and if so, I would entertain a motion from someone to approve.
Tidings, I'll make the motion to approve.
Canauer, I'll second.
All right, we're back to our old...
Yep, back to a draw.
Our old patterns of everybody jumping in, so how about we give this one to Bastian?
I have something to add. Lori, before you give the roll, one thing I can add for us guys, just in that moment, let's try using the hand up first, so we're not going for a draw to see who can speak first. Put your hand up, and then we can see, AJ and I, we can see who's acknowledging and then speak. Okay? Cool. Lori, you can go for the roll.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, great. One more thing, just as a reminder, if you're looking to speak and you're on mute, you can hit your spacebar and hold it down. It's one of those momentary switches, so you can depress the spacebar if you have a keyboard, and then you'll be unmuted so that we can hear you. Okay, we have some agenda items. Zach, would you like to walk us through our agenda? We have a tabled item and a couple of action items before the public hearing starts.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, your tabled application has been officially withdrawn by the applicant. This was for the application of 1549 Empire Boulevard, the Dyslexia Center of Rochester, and its associated parking improvements that they were requesting. Last week, they contacted us asking the application be withdrawn, therefore it has been, and no additional actions required of the Board for that application. So, moving on, we do have two action items this evening. The first one is for Pennfield Square. They have a, it's our recently under construction, recently approved mixed-use project next to the YMCA on Route 250. We have two applicants here on behalf of this request, Adam Driscoll and, oh, Chris, I'm terribly sorry, I just blanked on your last name. It might be in front of me. Chris McAllister, there we are. So, what I'll do is I'll present this matter to the Board, and Adam and Chris, if the Board have any questions, they will ask you. So, on the screen, on my projector screen, we have a reference map of the proposed signage that they are looking to install along the main road end, and on the bridge, the pedestrian bridge that connected the senior apartments to the assisted living building. The reason this has come before this Board is because due to the requirements of the mixed-use manual, the Planning Board has the ability to review the designs of signage for mixed-use developments. We are not looking at setbacks, we are not looking at the number of signs, they have a separate application to the Zoning Board of Appeals for that. We are strictly looking at this for the aesthetics of it, to make sure that it is consistent with the overall development that this Board approved early last year. So, with that being said, I have provided this map to all Board members. I also have another document here that was provided by the applicant that gives us some elevations of the signs as we flip through them. From my review, the materials and colors are consistent with what was approved by the Board during its review process of the overall project. The first one I have on the screen here is the entrance sign up by the road. It's monument sign, obviously with cutouts for future tenants that are associated with the mixed-use development. And stop, and if anyone has a question, please...
I have a question.
Stop me along the way.
Question I have is, it looks like there's room for two more tenants, at least in that graphic. If there are more than two tenants, how would that be laid out on the sign? Would the entire sign layout change, or would they make it work somehow in the space?
Would you like Chris to address that? She, or Adam, they're both just here. I know from my side of things, our code does have a max square footage allowed for signs, so if they were to increase it by adding panels below, they'd have to go to the zoning board for that, or they'd have to reconfigure this sign to as-is in its dimensions to add more tenant slots there, or it's completely up to them if they want to add those even, because typically we see in commercial projects, that usually comes with a cost for the tenant.
I mean, I'm sure they have an answer yet. Let's unmute them and get a quick answer if we could.
Okay. Adam or Chris, would either of you want to address AJ's question about the addition of, the potential for additional signage if necessary?
So I actually think Adam needs to address the question about any additional tenants that would be on that property first.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, AJ. We're anticipating two future tenants at some point, obviously. If we had additional tenants, I think, depending on if we can adapt the current sign or add below it, we'd have to, we'd have to create a...
So, I mean, I can address the design of it. We can certainly either adapt the existing square foot as needed by changing the tenant panels, if you will, but I guess the question of adding any additional tenants, I don't know that there's even really any expectations or desire to do that, at least in the near future, that I were, based on the property.
Just a point of clarification, there are a couple of things. For the record, Bob Canauer is recusing himself from this application, so he wanted to make sure that that was on the record, and Chris, the, am I correct in assuming that that's probably one large internal box, and those black lines are just like aluminum trim pieces, and then you'd have acrylic panels with the graphics on them?
Correct. Actually, page two shows the description of how the signage is going to be prepared, and it's actually going to be two different processes. The top is a different process than the bottom, so yes, the bottom could be changed based on those acrylic panels and having new channels put in.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I think that's...
Yeah, that answers my question. Okay, keep going, Zach.
All right. Thank you, Adam and Chris. I'm just going to keep flipping through these pages. We were just, I have page two showing on my screen now. Some dimensions are shown for the monument sign, some more specs on it. Then we look at the weight-finding signs that are proposed to be close, that are proposed to be installed along Road A, the entrance road from Route 250 going back into the project site. These are being proposed to be installed near the property line, closer than what the setbacks allow, which is why this is also going to go to the zoning board for really the setback review. This is kind of orientation of what it would look like, an elevation of what it would look like at a pedestrian scale. These things are removable. We did note that they are, they're being proposed within easement areas for utilities. Obviously, they can be removed relatively easily and then reinstalled. That does come at the cost of the owner, but I did speak with engineering on that. They are not concerned with these signs being in those specific easements.
Okay. And they're style-wise, very similar to the existing signs?
Yeah, I would agree, yep. And there are, exactly, there are two existing, and two, there are two existing, is what I should go back to on this, on our call-out, on our call-out here with the signage plan. There are two existing signs for the East Side YMCA and U of R Medical Center that's in the YMCA. They have one called out here at the back of the drive, and then one as you enter as well. The two new, the new signs are proposed along the entryway here, and then I still have to scroll to the building mounted sign for the pedestrian bridge area. And let me get to that. So up on my screen is a shot of that. Again, I'll open this up to the Board for conversation if there are any questions about this sign, its placement, style, if you're comfortable with it. Burton, I see you.
Yeah, I would like to ask the applicant if they would consider giving the Board some kind of assurance that all ground-mounted signs in the future, as this project develops and new tenants, are consistent with what they're showing us here.
Yeah, we would want it to be consistent as well.
Jim, I can capture that as part of the Board's decision here tonight. What I can say now is, what we're looking for from the Board during this review is a memo to the Zoning Board of Appeals that documents your review process of the designs and aesthetics of these signs, and then any other comments, concerns you may have for the zoning board that we can pass on. As part of that, I can document what you just said, Jim, I can document that in the memo.
Yeah, well, what they're saying appears to be favorable to me.
Anybody else have comments, questions?
I have no comment. I'm fine with the signs.
Bob?
Recused.
Oh yeah, right. Recused, sorry.
AJ, any comments?
No, I'm good with it. Terry?
I'm fine.
Okay. So, do we need to move?
Yes, I would look for a motion from the Board authorizing me to send a memo on behalf of the Board to the Zoning Board stating that you are not opposed to what's being presented for the signage of this project at this time, and we'll pass it along to the Zoning Board so they can review that and the setbacks.
I'll make the motion, do, send the letter.
Okay. Somebody want a second? Raise your hand first.
I'll second.
Okay, we have Bastian second, and Tidings first making the motion. Lori?
Okay, Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer's recused.
Oh, he's recused. And Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, so that's four ayes, and it passes. All right, thanks, folks.
Thank you, and it was nice to see you all again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Likewise. Stay safe.
You too.
You too, thank you.
All right. Next up is our, do we have any other items?
Yes, one more quick one, and somehow we're still doing this before 7:00. Don't know how. Oh yeah, I forgot, all this stuff is being transcribed, so I can't just say everything I want to say. Where is this button that I'm looking for? Rotate. So we have a resub request at 339 Embry Road and 1534 Creek Street. I have visual of the map up on my screen. I zoomed in to try and help show it. Let me bear with me as I attempt to get this thing back over to that side of town. We're basically looking at a two-lot to two-lot resubdivision, no new lots being created, is a lot-line shift to transfer acreage from one property to the next. Both lots would be compliant with the code. Where'd you go? See if I can get this thing out. Want to show you a before picture, a little easier here on the map once it loads. So again, the properties requesting this are 339, this very oddly shaped parcel. Currently has 9.4 acres, and 1534 Creek Street with 2.4 acres. 339, the owner of 339 Embry is proposing basically to sell the north and southern chunks of land to 1534 and merge it into his property, establishing a new property line here for 339. And I will go back to the PDF to show that. This is the new property line for his property. He would just have this portion, again, the south, and the north will go to the Creek Street property. These are the lines that would be eliminated, and the land would be merged.
Staff or PRC have any showstopping concerns on this?
No, we have no concerns since everything is compliant.
Have we had this in front of us before, this location?
Not recently, to my knowledge.
Not recently, some time ago, I recall something.
I believe so. We did, I believe we looked at it once. I don't believe anything was done.
Okay.
Yep.
Any comments from other Board members? Bastian?
No, I'm good with it.
Burton?
No, I'm good, that's fine.
Canauer?
Yeah, looks fine with me.
Terry?
I have no concerns, thank you.
Okay, then I'd like to entertain a motion if somebody would like to move to approve it.
Approve. Bastian will approve.
Bastian approves. Do we have a second?
Tidings, second motion, I guess.
I got Canauer with the hand up.
Okay.
Bobby, you just need to turn your mic on.
I didn't see his hand up. He was frozen, for me.
Canauer, second.
I don't know if I just forced a second on him, but...
I think...
Tidings, I apologize. I just saw it on my screen.
Bob might have been asleep. Terry tried to jump in, and Zach rescued Bob.
Okay.
All right, Terry, I owe you one.
No problem.
Okay, so we have a second by Bob Canauer. Lori, would you like to call the vote?
Sure. Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canauer?
Did you unmute, Bob?
Bob, did you hear us? We were able to unmute when you cast that vote, because we didn't hear it on our end.
Okay.
There you are, we hear you.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, so we have five ayes, and it is approved. Great, thanks, guys. What else we got, Zach?
Phase one of this meeting is now complete.
Okay, work session portion is complete, and now we will be getting ready for our public hearing.
We can transition right into it. Did you have anything you wanted to...
Yeah, 701. So, assuming everybody's good downstairs, which I'm, I think we are.
We are.
Okay, I will read this, I'm going to read this notice again, just to be fair and safe, in case people are just tuning in. So, "Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Governor's Executive Orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the Open Meetings Law. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Pennfield's website, www.pennfield.org, and on the Town of Pennfield's Government Access Channel 1303. Meeting will also be later transcribed. If you would like to address the Board on any public hearing matter, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each matter after the Board responds to the applicant's presentation with its questions and concerns. You can participate by phone at (585) 340-8771, or by electronic submission at www.pennfield.org." Now, for anyone who's interested in public participation, this is the first time that we're trying this, so please be patient with us as we try to work through this. We want to hear your comments and concerns, and if you go on pennfield.org, on the homepage, there's a button or an icon that says "Live Meeting Video." You can click on that. If you submit online, please also submit a comment. We have, two people have, I guess, registered or tried to participate but didn't leave any comments, and that is Jack Fairhurst and Liz Fairhurst. So if you have a comment, if you could potentially log back on and type in your comment in the comment field, or alternatively, call (340) 8771.
It's our close captions.
And, yes. So, that process, if there's a lot of calls coming in, the mission control downstairs may ask to get your phone number and call you back when it's your turn to speak to the Board. And with that, Zach, if you'd like to, I guess, read the first application, and we'll get this party started.
I will do that, and as I do that, James and Fred, you guys are welcome to come back, and I will read the legal of this application. While you're there, please keep your microphones muted, James and Fred, until we're ready to start your presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, turn on your video.
Yep. Application number one, BME Associates, 10 Lift Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Conifer Pennfield Associates, requests under Chapter 250, Articles 12-12.2 and 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Pennfield for preliminary final site plan and conditional use permit approval to construct a new Starbucks restaurant with drive-through service and associated site improvements on a 1.2-acre portion of the property located at 2071 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, known as Parkside Commons Plaza. The property is now reformally owned by Conifer Pennfield Associates and Zone General Business. Application number 20P-0003, SBL number 140.05-1-1.2/2160. And with that being said, James and Fred, I will turn it over to you guys. The floor is yours, and James, I do have the video ready for whenever you want me to present that to the Board.
Thank you very much for the introduction, Zach. Hopefully you guys hear me okay.
Yes, we can.
My name is James Kritikos. I am with BME Associates. Here with me this evening is Fred Rinaldi with Conifer Pennfield Associates. They are the applicant, and they own and control the Parkside Commons Plaza, so we're doing redevelopment. I guess to start, I'd like to share my screen, just as a kind of a quick introduction. So we're looking to do a redevelopment on one of the existing out parcels at the plaza and construct a new 2,000-square-foot Starbucks with a drive-through. We're going to be demoing an existing building out there. It was formerly a Verizon store. Here is kind of a, an existing, sorry about that, an existing view of the plaza, so we'll be looking to demo this building right in front here, and reconfigure the parking area and access drives to support the new development. So this essentially, we are looking to construct the new building, obviously Starbucks. Now, Zach, if you want to show the fly-around, just to give everybody kind of an idea of the architectural features of this, I think this would be a pretty good time.
Thank you, James. I'll do that. Let's just make sure we have it up on our screen before I hit play. All right, beautiful, and press play.
So this is a Starbucks building, obviously here, flying around. The tree line in the back on the other side of 50, obviously, we didn't render the plaza, so that's all just shown as a wooded area, but that is 250 kind of to the left right now, so that there is other development across the way, but the remainder of the plaza is rendered pretty closely. And the building, obviously, is exactly the intent that the architect is going to be opposing.
Thank you, James.
Everybody see that okay?
Yeah.
Board members?
Yep.
Great.
All right, perfect. Glad that worked out. So with Parkside Commons Plaza, this is about an 8.77-acre plaza. This redevelopment activity is going to result in us to starting about 1.2 acres. We do have a small net increase in green space, so we will be at 30.3%. We're gaining about 330 square feet, so we've kind of just had to figure the property just to maintain that, which we were able to do. We do meet the parking requirements for the overall plaza per the parking code, as well as the Starbucks minimum recommended guidelines. They typically recommend one space per 100 square feet, which would be about 20 parking spaces. We have 23 in the front immediately of the building, and then they also have access to utilize the remaining spaces throughout the plaza. We have created some additional... We have created some additional walkways to support some of the site circulation out here. Stormwater with the reduction in the preferred area, we aren't required to meet any of the DEC quantity controls. However, we are still going to be obtaining a permit under the redevelopment criteria and providing water quality treatment. We're going to be doing this with a CPS unit. We're going to connect it right upstream of where all of the new storm sewers for this area are going to connect into the existing system, so that way we can treat nearly 100% of all the new development area and that before that runoff is conveyed to the existing stormwater facility that is located in the rear of the plaza. So that stormwater... so here's a more complete picture of the plaza. The red is the actual property outline. The water facility is located in the back of the plaza back here. So basically, the storm sewers convey all this runoff around this building and then into this facility for treatment. So we won't be affecting that. It's going to be exactly as is and continue to serve the plaza as it does today. For sanitary sewers, there is a sanitary sewer that's dedicated to the town, which generally bisects the site, kind of comes right down through here. This did limit some of our development options and layout configurations with where we get the building, but we will be connecting directly into that. We're maintaining that and not disturbing it. There will be obviously a gap with this restaurant. The water service for this, we will be tying into the existing water system that is located behind an RPZ in the Monroe Muffler Building down here. So with that, we have good water pressure. There's already existing hydrants out there that serve and provide fire for all the buildings, including this new one we're proposing. For the lighting out here, we will be replacing every light bulb that we touch with new LED fixtures. We're also going to be proposing some baller lighting around the stock in this area, just to help kind of illuminate this entrance a little bit better after coming off of 250. Also did incorporate some large landscape boulders here on the perimeter of the patio, so to give additional traffic vehicles in case somebody does accidentally jerk or something of those natures. So just trying to be very conscious of the safety of this area and making sure that the traffic flows appropriately. We are doing a bit of land improvements, a lot of foundation plannings around the patio and the building area, as well as planting new trees up in the front. There isn't too much landscaping that we're taking out with this, and I know Fred and the Rinaldis have been pretty adamant about doing good landscaping out here containing the plaza, and I know they've planned on investing more money in other portions of the plaza recently. We do have... this is a little bit of an interesting construction sequence. There is kind of two phases to the project that can be done either simultaneously or separated depending on what value Fred wants to coordinate with their tenant during construction. There is going to be a little bit of disruption while we do some of the work immediately around their building, but we're confident that we can work with them to maintain proper access and allow them adequate communication with their client, not disrupt their service. We have received comments from the town staff, and we have provided written responses to everything. We've also provided updated plans reflecting all the responses that we made. Only item on there that I think was kind of left out was the northern access. There was a request for us to review plaza access and making another connection to the property to the north to eliminate having two access points onto this perimeter road. We've done a pretty extensive review of this, and I know Fred has some other plans. There's now a medical office building in the rear of the property here, so it is our preference to really maintain this access lane for us, so we have control over it in terms of making sure it's planted, as well as direction sign to get people to this building, they're accessing it off the perimeter road. Additionally, the property to the north, there really isn't any traffic that exits here. Everything that comes through the drive at this bank exits at the northern exit. Really, this track lane is kind of limited to what's coming out of this front part here in these southern parking spaces, so we feel that this isn't an issue. This drive actually was existing in this exact same place several years ago, I believe, back in the 90s. The last set of approvals here actually proposed taking it out to be able to meet the green spacer course. With this redevelopment, we're obviously cutting a couple of these drivelanes out to get the drive-through in here with appropriate stacking. So with that, we just want to kind of maintain our site location at the northern portion of the site and not force people to have to kind of do some awkward turning movements for us. We are at the zoning board next week for a variance from the New York State DOT. Right away, there is a 50-foot setback requirement. There is a 15 and a half-foot existing variance for the property right now. We're asking for this to be about five feet here, just based on where we need to relocate these parking spaces. There's still pretty decent separation in the lawn area with vegetation between here and the sidewalk, and then the edge of pavement for the DOT right away. There is also some other locations on the property down here where there is some pre-existing non-conforming conditions, where this is actually a 0.0 setback from the DOT right away based on some previous takings, which also did reduce the right-of-way available to this property as 250 has kind of grown recently. Additionally, there's also a couple other locations in the area, like immediately across the street, where they don't have this 50-foot parking setback requirement. So we feel that it's pretty fitting for us to be able to do this here. We've added a lot of signage in the pedestrian market to help control traffic and keep everybody going at a slow and reasonable pace. That's pretty much sums it up, site development. I don't know, Fred, if you want to touch on any of your other plans for the building or the plaza in general?
James, thank you, and hi, everybody. I just to touch quickly on two topics, and I'll work in order of less spoken. One of the reasons that we've requested to maintain the orientation of the drive lane on the northern portion of the site is that you will very likely see from us people to modernize medical medical office building. There's one tenant in the medical office building right now. It's pediatric unit. And it is our belief that through a modernization of the building and adding some features that'll make it more usable or user-friendly to a variety of different business types, that we'll be able to have a little more success in its lease-up. The other thing that will allow us to do is, I've always thought that it was bizarre that my father didn't build a more front-facing portion towards the park, and one of the luxuries was Zoom, is he can't hear me right now. But the portions that are facing west with the park and everything in the back there, it is fully our intention to improve the landscaping and celebrate our proximity to the park there. So again, one of the reasons we'd like to hold the design with that traffic pattern is that we are going to be building, proposing a building that will have, it'll functionally have four active elevations, subject to municipal approval for it. But the goal is to make it a little more dynamic of a building that'll be applicable and user-friendly to a wider variety of businesses. And my last comment would be to any adjustments to the drive patterns and additional parking. I did want, I wanted to be known for the record that we have engaged Frank Dolan of Bergman Associates to be reviewing the, really, the safety components as a priority. His contract is for this to be something that runs perpetuity. So I know that we've got a very different style of tenant, a very exciting tenant, and I just want to let the town know that we'll be monitoring any adjustments to the traffic flow, especially as it relates to safety, to be able to react accordingly. We have several phases of things that we can add to always increase the safety and user-friendliness of the entire project, but especially the proposed portion that's being reviewed this evening. And then lastly, this is, any new Starbucks that you see proposed anywhere, there's a new program and protocol that they're following, and they're really trying to build what they call 30-year stores, meaning that they want to be here for a very, very long time. So there's some features that exist that you might say, you know, maybe they don't need this right now, or it looks a little unique for what you would traditionally see, and it's because they're investing to be in these communities for a very long time, and that's why you see a greater opportunity to improve building materials, building styles, glazing, lights, places to enjoy your product, both inside and outside, and also providing the developers an opportunity to allow for that product to exist consistent with design, style, colors, et cetera, with the plaza or property that it's entering.
Brad, I need to interrupt you. Brad, I need to interrupt you for one second. Dave, I don't know if you can hear me downstairs. Bill Bastian is having difficulties seeing us.
And hearing us.
And hearing us. He's asking me if he should leave the meeting and then come back. Come back. Thank you.
Alright, we're going to pause for a couple minutes while we work through a couple technical issues.
Bill, can you hear me?
Okay, Dave. Okay, Dave.
Dave, we just got an echo through the speakers here that just started.
Anytime I turn on the talk back, you're going to hear me coming from the back of the same room.
Okay. 10-4. All you people at home watching, good time for a drink break, grab a snack.
Popcorn.
What is it called?
Some popcorn.
Intermission.
A break in play? Like being at a hockey game.
Right.
Yes, he is... He's leaving and rejoining. Just wait and see. I got the... I'm letting people in and out, so I'm waiting for him.
Okay. My little commercial. Anyone at home that wants to call in? 340-8771. 340-8771. Carrying code 585.
Bob Kenauer, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Can you get video from the TV feed?
Just as an update from Bill, he is restarting his computer.
Okay.
You're doing so well. You're doing so well.
There's always going to be glitches with technology like this.
Very true.
We're not CNN. We're not some major network that does it all the time. This is our first time. Well, not our first time, but very close.
1.5. First time was half.
And we're dependent upon everyone's home Wi-Fi. We're not just dependent upon things here.
Lot of external force.
Must have a lot of stuff on his computer.
Do you have to wait while he's doing it?
Got to wait for him to come back online so he can participate. His system's updating.
Yeah, yeah. I asked him if he wants to join with his phone and see if I can get the stuff.
I think we'll be able to take every opportunity possible to bust his chops about this in the future.
I just texted him the meeting link and passcodes. I'll say, I don't know if I can ask Pete at this time if we're allowed to continue while Bill does his thing, or you want to just wait to see if we can get Bill back in.
I'd like to wait another minute, too, if we can.
Yep, I think you should wait.
Oh, there's Pete. Thank you. Thank you.
Did he respond to your suggestion to at least join the audio with his phone? Or does he have another device he can join with?
Working on that. I sent him the meeting invitation to his phone.
Once again, if you're watching this from home and you want to comment on it, you can call 340-8771, or log on penfield.org. Home screen has live meeting video, and you can send in comments that way. And we already have a couple comments that have been put in electronically, which we will get to after the applicant finishes their presentation and the board asks their questions. So thank you so far for those of you submitting comments.
I don't want to be that guy that's always texting while he's in the middle of trying to get things going, because I know I would not appreciate that.
Right.
Kind of want to.
Yes, let's stop trying to get back on board.
Yes, sir. Yes. Uh, I will ask him. Would that be the same line as AJ's, guys? The eight seven seven one?
Yeah, have him call that, we'll transfer him to that. And then you can either watch the web screen to see the visuals.
Well, you'd probably have to turn that TV, because if he can get his computer turned on, he should join the Zoom meeting.
Got him. Hang on. Hang on. There you go. Bill's back. And I'm just waiting for his video to come through.
Okay. Okay.
I want to make sure he can hear us and we're not frozen.
Fred, you could maybe come back on.
All right, Bill, can you hear us before we get started? Bill, we just want to test your audio.
Can you see him?
Yeah, he's on his phone. Bill, I just need you to enable the audio. The microphone. You saw Pete's? Nope. You saw Pete's note? Oh, hang on. Oh. Bill, I can see you. I just need to hear you. Need to hear you. It's in and out. I'll just monitor him if you want to let Fred to keep going.
Okay. Bill, if you can hear us, we're gonna get started again. We'd love to see you raise your hand and, and acknowledge that you can hear us. And if you can jump in with audio, that'd be great. Otherwise, if you could maybe call the phone number and downstairs will patch you in. So Fred, if you want to continue, please proceed.
Thank you. So I, I had completed my last, my last topic. But if there's anything that, that Bill or anybody thought they may have missed, I can, I can revisit any or all of what was, was covered. We have, we've been studying this for quite some time. So James and I are very happy to answer any questions of the board or the, the public at your discretion.
Okay, okay. So this is. Great, Bill's back online.
That's Jim.
Oh, that's Jim?
Yep.
All right, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, Fred, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so when you made your presentation the last time, you talked a lot about Starbucks and their new program and, you know, how they were attempting to draw in patrons and, and the mix of walk up and drive through and people parking and going inside. And, and I understand from reading a little bit about this, some similar facilities, that their business model might change a little bit due to the pandemic. Have you heard anything about the, you know, perhaps they're anticipating a change, a reduction in, you know, walk-in and walk-up patrons and an increase in drive-through patrons?
So, so one of, one of the, the benefits of having Starbucks as an active tenant is that we have, we have a great channel communication. And these, and these guys are, are very, are very good at, at what they do, both in entitlement and then, and then in operation once they're open. So we have been in constant dialogue and communication with Starbucks, Starbucks corporate and their real estate team of directors. And the, the nice thing with the way that this building was oriented, which, which I did want to point out is actually five hundred square feet or twenty percent smaller than the former First Niagara and Verizon. But the, the concept that they are, that they've been obsessed with is allowing for the interior footprint to be modular in, in a source. There's certain infrastructure that you can move around, obviously, but they are designing this in, in, in a way where they can be reactive. And that is, and that's pre-COVID. This format still accomplishes their goal. The, the nice thing about the way that the building, the rectangle shape of the building and the way that the interior flow was oriented is they, it gives them great opportunity for passageway, for directing customer foot traffic for those who are picking up inside. It also partitions nicely the outdoor seating area. So we'll actually, I'll show you as, as, once they release it to me formally, the, the seating plan, so you can kind of see what I'm talking about. And I'll put, I'll put an option A, B, C, and D, et cetera. And then they, they have, and then they have ample opportunity for, for employees to, to access the building by separate entrance that you'll see there to the north. And, and also it is our anticipation that all the additional parking that's located to the eastern portion of the site boundary will be first utilized by, by employees. And so this, so this template is, is very much still consistent with their, what they believe to be their future model. And it is inclusive to any responses and, and quick learning that they've had to, to incorporate as a result of COVID. And I can give you an example of very much the contrary, where I have a Starbucks that exists now in Victor, New York, that's in a cobblestone building that was built in eighteen thirty six, where I have very limited ability to, to modify anything in there. So our planning there has been, has been very specific and, and, and I wouldn't call it limiting, but, but certainly not, not, not perfect scenario, just, just given the orientation of the other building. So this is still, this is still what they would consider future-proof. And as we've all learned, the future is near impossible to, to predict. But this has been, that, that topic specifically was vetted. And, and we're confident that given things like the glazing that lives on the south and east elevations, give us an opportunity. I'm gonna build the glazing, all the glazing is gonna be modular. And so I can, I can adjust the, the entryways. I can actually, I can, I can, I'll be able to pull the glass portions in and out if I have to modify the location of doors along those elevations, which will be, which is a nice, nice feature. A little bit of a premium, but it'll be a feature that we'll, that we'll enjoy there, that we can be adaptive. And the hope would be, especially given our working relationship with the town of Penfield, that if a, a suggestion or a change of significance comes through over the next series of weeks, or certainly before, if we're, if we're lucky enough to receive approval, certainly before we break ground, I can promise you that I feel completely comfortable coming to you guys in your, in your building department to, to talk about adjustments to, to, to protect and make more safe these, these locations. This is, this is the building that, that I will be, will be building and underwriting. And I certainly do not like building things that are immediately antiquated or, or wasting money when we could have made smart decisions on the onset. So that is a, that is a topic that will not disappear, I can promise you.
Okay.
Jim's, Jim's talking, I can't hear him.
Yeah, I'm more interested in exploring whether there's a potential increase for queuing of vehicles and vehicles pulling out of there at a, at a quicker pace than that small, you know, path around the building could accommodate. James, you want to weigh in on, on how many cars we can queue up to that drive-through lane?
Absolutely. Initially, we incorporated cars, I believe, right onto our site plans. Let me just make sure I got that right. Can you guys all see our site plan efficiently right here now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So we are providing seven cars, I believe, to the order window. There's seven cars stacking from the delivery service window to the order window. And then we have another five-car tail. There's actually another space for another car in here as well. So we do have meeting the Starbucks recommended guidelines for a, which is a half-acre site on a twenty-five thousand square foot building. Obviously, this is a little bit smaller of a facility than that. So we feel that we've provided adequate traffic based on that. And we have kind of reviewed this in depth, as Fred mentioned, with, with Bergman Associates as kind of our traffic and safety consultant. And they agree with us that this is the most optimal configuration that we can present on this site, given some of the other restrictions, like maintaining the perimeter access and avoiding the, the sanitary sewers.
And, and Jim, just, just real quick, the, the stacking, the queuing and trail, the, when I had, I had mentioned briefly moments ago before the pause that the, the new store, the new store program, they're building what they're calling these thirty-year community models. So there is, there is almost double and certainly significantly more stacking than they would need initially and immediately with the store. So I'm, I'm comfortable that, that the, that that access will capture any immediate change in consumer behavior with regards to the way that they pick up their, their goods. The other thing that's nice about the visibility into the store and also the, the pass-through lane and et cetera, and the way that it's oriented in regards to Voo Two Fifty, is that there's, there's great opportunity to, to safely view and make a decision whether the opportunity cost is, is there and you're gonna, you're gonna continue down and maybe go to Dunkin' Donuts if it's too busy. So this, this site orientation, which has changed many times since we initially looked at this, reflects the ability for consumers to make decisions that allow them to, if they don't want to wait in line, or if they initially thought that there were gonna be a drive-through order and the queue is too large and they have the, the parking access and availability right there, both on the right and left, they'll be able to, to make that decision safely and, and immediately. And all the directional signage will, will help promote and guide accordingly.
Okay, well said, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred?
Fred?
And James, this is AJ. If you could speak to stacking on that perimeter access road and, and cars pulling into park, will it be difficult for them to get out, back out of that, the parking spots to the east of the building and on the west side of that driveline? Actually, on the east side too.
So, James, go first?
Sure. So AJ, you know, we, we've kind of studied this in pretty, in pretty detail. We did have some original planned speed bumps proposed on this driveway. We really just wanted to kind of make everyone aware. This is a parking lot, although it is also a perimeter access road. You know, people shouldn't be traveling, you know, more than five miles an hour through this zone. We have added some pedestrian crossing signs at the north and south end of this entire driveline across our property. And we hope to kind of just, kind of create a atmosphere of lower speeds and stuff, which the parking, the signage, the ballard lighting, the building lighting, kind of all help to create in, in this environment.
And, and AJ, this is Fred. The, the, the other thing that we've done, and I, and I kind of spoke about this quickly, but I'm happy to elaborate, is we've had, we've had some current circumstances that are out of the norm in the way that, that we and, and my company and James study these projects. And typically, we'll go in and, and through sim modeling, actual counts and things like that, we'll continue to capture and study this as we, as we respond to the, to the final designs. Bergman Associates is confident that they have collected the data necessary to, that, that allows for this proposal, as it is right now, to exist safely. I have armed Bergman Associates, Frank Dolan, with the challenge of, of building a phasing program that if we had to introduce anything traffic mitigating that, that's set up and ready to do as a phasing plan, I, I kind of referenced that in my notes after James had spoken. The other thing that we've done in an effort to mitigate traffic speeds there, in addition to what James had mentioned, is the, we've created some kind of visual pinch zones with the landscaping. You'll see the additional trees that we've, we've added in the way that we design the, the programming up and down that corridor there as you move.
Exactly.
As you move north and south. And, and then you also have the features and directory signage that we'll be introducing and rebuilding as we upgrade and modify the driveline access points. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of natural activity on this driveway. And it's actually something that I'd like most about the plaza setup is that we get to live as a larger plaza because of our neighbors to the north there. And the, the businesses to the north are very, are very healthy and they pull a nice complementary traffic pattern. And it's, it just, it functions as a large open-air center. And, and we have studied years and years of, of data with regards to incidents and accidents, both reported by police and reported internally through property management and captured by records of the tenants. And we found that we've, we've noticed no, no record of, of incident, regular incident or anomalies that exist through that, through that corridor. So right now, we're, we're very comfortable, but we will absolutely be prepared to respond to any unsafe conditions that are caused by the addition of, of Starbucks tenancy.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Looks like we have Bill Bashan back online here. I see his video. Bill, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I'm back. My, I guess my computer shut down, then it was updating, so apologize.
No, no problem.
I did hear some on the phone, but now I'm back on the computer, so.
Okay.
Okay.
This is, you're the lead on this. Do you have any questions that haven't been addressed yet? Do you have any questions that haven't been addressed yet?
Well, I missed probably the first five minutes of questions. But my primary concern, AJ, is what you just stated, was the driveline and the parking that will back out into the driveline. That is busy. I know you've got the, the driveline, you've got Darren's Original Dunkin' Donuts, you've got ESPNL down there. And it's busy and I, you know, that, that's my primary concern. And I was wondering if any other has been given to reconfiguring the site to, to remove the parking from that main driveline or move the main driveline. But I, I heard what you said, but I, I still think that's going to be problematic.
What, what I think I'd like to do as a next, the next step would be to, to present to you guys formally the, the phasing plan, the work that was done, the study that allowed us to settle in and be comfortable with this design and kind of the overall complications for why, for why we feel that this, this layout works and not just works functionally for, for the tenant, but from a safety standpoint. So the, I, I can, I can promise you that the, the prospect of having a, a condition that's causing accidents or an unsafe environment on, on that parcel is, it would be very disparaging for me. It's not consistent with the type of tenancies in there. I've got pediatrics units. As you are well aware, Starbucks is often patroned by children. We've got park there. So safety has been a very important and critical feature that we've studied paramount for almost anything else on here, at least equal to. So I, what I would like to do is present, I'll, I'll get to Zach immediately, all of the work that's been done to prepare this plan. And then also the phasing models that we, that we'll show and, and provide as testimony as part of the resolution, if, if there is, if there is one eventually for this that can be enacted at the town's discretion in coordination with us.
Just kind of also noting on that, Bill and AJ, we did have, as I noted, some, some speed traffic control humps previously proposed that were removed based on some comments received from the planning board and town staff. We'd be more than happy to incorporate those back into the plan or even look at doing something similar like the pavement milling, rumble strip things just to kind of add some awareness to all the vehicles driving through, that they should be aware, just because there is traffic and pedestrian movements there.
Okay. Phil, did that answer your question?
Yeah, so we'll wait to see the, the additional information that will be provided to the town. Okay.
All right, all right. How about signage review? Have you gone to the ZBA? Do you need to go to the ZBA for signage review on this?
I believe we have designed the signage in compliance with the town code. I'd love to confirm with the architect that we're meeting all that. If we do need to go to the ZBA to get a variance, we will be more than happy to do that. We obviously have a lot, a bit of time before this would actually be constructed, if we do get approval. We are on the ZBA meeting next week, so we'll, we'll look into that before and have a good idea before we come back to see you if we need to submit an application for signage.
So AJ, we've reviewed the, the sign amount. The, the square footage of allotted signage is consistent with, with what is presently on, on the building and what would be approved. The, I just want to make certain that, that it's, it's obvious that we have four elevations that will carry the tenant signage. So I just want to make sure that the number of signs is approvable. I know that there are, there are certain, there are certain features that are allowed to, to, for this building, the, the pad site that's out at that intersection. But I will, I'll confirm the same and, and absolutely place ourselves on, on a zoning board agenda if, if we need to.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Anybody else have any comments or concerns from the board?
Yeah, and part of that I just want to know.
Yeah, I have two que-
So Bob, can I, or go ahead? Bob, put your pressure space key.
AJ?
Yes, I can hear you now, but I couldn't hear you for a second.
I had two ques- I got, I just got a note that says my internet connection is unstable.
You are.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you intermittently.
AJ?
Come back to your mic.
I can hear you intermittently.
Okay, how's this?
That's better.
That's better.
Okay. I'll ask quickly if they could describe deliveries to the building, the, the type of truck and time of day. And second of all, the par- parking in the fr-
We just lost you.
Front, how does that roadway width compare to the Starbucks hard road? Okay, what, what part did you miss?
Parking in the front.
Most of it.
The parking part, traffic.
So, but Bob, I think I, I think I was able to put together both your questions. The first one, I have, I have the delivery schedule for all product and materials that are, that'll be delivered to this site, and I'll send that to Zach for dissemination to the board. And the nice thing is that the, the bulk of it is by, by, by smaller vehicle and very, and very routine. Like I said, I have a, I have a similar-sized store in a historic building in Victor that has a, a very tight parking lot. And we, we perform and live there very easily and without issue. And then with regards to the, to the, the road width, James, you're going to have to look at that if he wants to compare that to hard road. The, so he, he's looking for, with the parking on both sides and, and the, the road width in between to compare that against the other Starbucks location.
Correct.
So we'll, we'll, we'll prepare and provide you with both of, both of those. We'll do an overlay for you on, on the second question. And then the delivery schedule, I actually have categorized by product that I can, I can show you, and I can overlay that on, on the route.
Okay, thanks, Fred. I'll, I'll look forward to those.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay, great.
Zach, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to rewind back to signage. Something I just wanted to call out for the board is that one thing we'll be looking for is some sort of notation on the plans that, that the signage details shown that are used for traffic control are also showing some branding signs for Starbucks. We just have to note that those are not for approval. That has to go through the building department, through a signed package application for review, just as Fred said he would do for this application.
Okay. All right, with no current further questions from the board, I'm going to open it up to the audience watching from home. And we do have a comment that had been submitted electronically. And just so that everybody can be clear at home, we're going to read the comments that come in. And if you call in, you can state your, your comment and concern. We won't necessarily address them tonight. What we're trying to do tonight is gather public input. And for the record, we will be holding the public input period open for another two weeks.
One, sorry.
One week?
Yes, seven days.
Seven days after this, tonight's hearing is closed. So with that, I will read our first electronic submission here. And this is from Mark, Mark Wallach at 34 Thorn Tree Circle, Penfield. "Good evening. Regarding application 20P-003 Starbucks, can additional information relative to the impact on traffic going to Route 250 be addressed? Has consideration to making the exit to Route 250 a right turn only?" So I think he was asking if consideration's been given to making the exit to Route 250 a right turn only. "We have had a family friend seriously injured by someone leaving that plaza. Thank you." So thank you, Mr. Wallach, for the comment, and it is entered for the record.
AJ, can you read me his address again?
Yes, the address is 34 Thorn Tree Circle.
Thank you.
In Penfield. We don't have any other electronic comments for this particular application. We have some coming up for Jackson Road.
Do we have any calls?
We don't have any phone calls. So with, without any further public comment currently, like I said, we will leave the public comment period open for another seven days on this application. And if no one from the board has any further comments, Fred, James, thank you very much for your presentation. And if you have any final statements, feel free to make them. Otherwise, we will move on to the next application.
Incredible. Well, I first want to, want to thank you, and I am proud to be a part of this inaugural takeoff of our future here. So thank you for including us and your patience. With regards to that last comment, the study for the entrance will be included in our, our traffic submittal.
Okay.
So the, so that, that'll be included. And then I'm going to let, I, I am going to leave here. People forgot that I was the last person in the office, so our alarm's going off. So I will, I'm going to say goodbye to everybody, and James, and James can, can answer any, any last questions. But thank you, thank everybody. I appreciate it.
All right, terrific. Thanks, Fred.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo Fred's sentiments, and we'll be looking to coordinate with town staff and provide you guys the additional information discussed tonight. Wish you guys all a great evening, and we'll be available if you have any questions.
Okay, terrific.
Terrific.
So with that, we will call that portion of the hearing closed. And Zach, as soon as you're ready, we can move on to item number two. And maybe we take this moment for downstairs mission control to give us any comments or feedback that they need us to take care of. They all are. They all are.
I'll try and figure out the echo. All right, Matt Tomlinson, you're welcome to come back in. Video and audio, I'm going to read the legal for your application. Application number two, Marathon Engineering, 39 Cascade Drive, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Combat Construction, request under check 250, Article 6, 6 dash 6.1, 11 dash 11.2 and 12 dash 12.2, according to the town of Penfield, for final subdivision and prelimi-, for final subdivision and preliminary final site plan and EPOD permit approval to construct a 72-lot, single-family subdivision under Town Law 278 on a 90.5-acre project site located at 1394 Jackson Road and 1440 Jackson Road. The property is now reformally owned by Lupo Brothers Family Trust, Brendanoff Family Trust, Kazanich Family Trust, Peter Rubino, G. De Pisa, and Santa Puccio, and zoned, single-family residential RR1. Application number 20P-004, SPL numbers 095.03-1-39110.01-1-14. That's all I have. Board, if you're ready, I'll kick it over to Matt. Okay, Matt, it's all yours. And we can't hear you.
Matt, can you unmute?
He is not muted.
AJ, can you hear me talking now?
I can, I can hear you now. Yes.
So as mentioned, I'm at Tomlinson's Marathon Engineering. I'm going to share my screen here in a second, so I want to walk the board through this project. We are requesting final approvals. And just to update the board on a couple of things here relative to where we've been and how we got to where we are. So in September of last year, September of 2019, this planning board approved a preliminary overall approval for this project. And just to orient you, north is to the right on the graphic that is shown on the screen, with Jackson Road here at the top of the screen and Plank Road here to the right. So we're at the southeast corner of Jackson and Plank. And we spent a significant amount of time working with the board on establishing the density of this project. It's a 72-lot subdivision. 71 lots were approved on the main road for the subdivision with two entrances, one to each street, and then one large lot in the corner right at the road in the state lot of, that's the 72nd lot. Subsequent to our preliminary subdivision approval, and the reason why it's been a few months since we've been back before you, is in part of our preliminary application, we coordinated and requested comment from several outside agencies, including New York State DEC for stormwater, the County Health Department for the sanitary sewer and water system upgrades, and Monroe County DOT for the roadway. And off-site sanitary installation. And so subsequent to our preliminary overall subdivision approval, we received comments from the DEC and the Health Department that the E1 sanitary systems were no longer approvable within this region of the DEC. And just to refresh the board's memory, originally, we were proposing a dedicated forest main throughout the subdivision with an individual E1 pump station at each house. Then there was going to be an off-site sanitary route running to the west along the south side of Plank Road to the intersection of Schucraft Road. So once we were told that we could not use the E1 pump system without the town taking dedication of the pump stations themselves, we had to transition the project to a gravity sanitary sewer system with a regional dedicated pump station that I'll flip to in a second, and then a forest main off-site. So as you can imagine, that affected our design quite a bit and required quite a bit of back and forth with those outside agencies and town staff, including Mark Valentine and the Sewer Department. In addition to that, we subsequently had some conversations with the town of Webster as well about routing the forest main north along Jackson Road and connecting into a system that ultimately goes to the Webster wastewater treatment plant. Their, Webster is in the process of upgrading some of their treatment capacities, and that was a shorter route and had no capacity concerns, as we came to find out going through that process. So that's kind of an intro into some of the changes that have been made or the reason for the changes. Now I'll flip over to what has currently been submitted for the final configuration to the planning board for consideration of final approval. So one of the things that was necessitated in providing gravity sanitary service to our subdivision was a modification to the roadway. And that's primarily driven by grade throughout the site. So this configuration, just to orient the board, this cul-de-sac follows exactly the center line of the previous roadway that was on. And I don't have them overlaid, but you can see that that cul-de-sac sits right in this area. And then this roadway and the entrance to Plank and to Jackson is unchanged. So what that allowed us to do with our line, and I'll just trace that center line of what was previously approved- So, what that allowed us to do with our design, and I'll just trace that center line of what was previously approved, was to follow the lower portion. This project or property slopes from a high point here in the southeast corner down to the presence of the wetlands and down to Jackson Road. So it allowed us to raise somewhat the center line of this roadway and provide gravity sewer, which is the highest point or the shallowest point here, down towards our dedicated pump station, which is in proximity to the low point on the site near where the stream goes underneath Plank Road, and allow for this cul-de-sac and all data that we had obtained aired with the board relative to depth of the bedrock, soil profiles and geometry essentially the same and minimize the amount of redesign. We also obviously have not changed density for the number of lots. We're still at seventy-two lots. We still have seventy-one along the roadways with two connection points in the exact same location as the preliminary approval. This change has also allowed us to accommodate several comments that we received from engineering staff relative to the location of the ponds and placing them in proximity to the roadways for ease of access and maintenance. We maintained the separations and buffers through the use of conservation easement and limited clearing at the limits of the construction that is extremely consistent with the preliminary design that you have approved. And then, I guess the last comment that I'll state is we've also worked with Monroe County Water Authority, who has several transmission lines, one through and parallel to Jackson Road, one through the site, and shifted our housing in order to accommodate their requirements for crossing of the transmission lines. I know that one comment in preliminary that we wanted to amend and speak to as part of our final design was the presence of bedrock on the site and concerns that the board had as well as neighboring properties relative to groundwater and the potential for issues with both the pump stations, which have now been eliminated, as well as sump pumps. And so, understanding that the requirement of the town is that the basements be out of the bedrock, no blasting for basements, et cetera. One of the things in transitioning to a gravity sanitary sewer system required us to raise the center line of the road and by extension, some of the house pads as well. When we had come in with a preliminary design, we had set all basements at lea- or all finished pads, excuse me, at least eight feet above the bedrock elevations that we obtained through the test pits. We also subsequently, when we were establishing the bedrock elevation and the location of the pump station, came back and did several additional test pits through the new roadway alignment for this portion of the lower road to ensure that we did not have any bedrock issues with the establishment of those grades as well. And so, what we have resulted in, while there definitely is some additional cost due to the dedicated pump station, the gravity and manholes versus a force main that could be laid following grade, the result of it has ended up with a design that's really resolved a lot of the questions or concerns that the board had relative to the property itself, while not compromising the amount of open space, conservation area, and buffer to neighbors. So I, I think that with that, I'll, I'll open it up to questions. I, I wanted to give a brief overview of the updates that we've done and explanation for why it's taken us this long to get back in front of this board. But we had quite a bit of, of items to work through in order to get back to, back to the point of requesting the final approval. The developer's very eager to get going. He's got plans to get out here just as quickly as restrictions lift. If we're able to obtain a favorable results to final subdivision. And we've been working diligently with town staff to kind of check off a lot of the other comments and boxes that we have to in order to establish districts, handle the dedication of utilities, et cetera. So with that, I'll open it up and answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay.
Really delighted to see the changes. Yeah, you can't hear me? Hello?
I can hear you.
All right.
Can you hear me there?
I can hear you. We can hear you.
Hang on, everyone hold on a second, please.
Okay. Jim, timeout for a second. Looks like.
Jim, timeout for a second. Looks like.
Our feed seems a little odd right now.
Our feed seems a little odd right now.
We can keep going? Keep going?
There's a big delay coming back through here from when we speak to when it comes through again on the speakers.
When we speak, when it comes again on this.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, folks, another short break we have.
Another short break, yeah.
You don't need to say the thing yet. Just bring the paper.
Just give your home number. Here's Jim sending us a message. Here we go.
Phone number three four zero eight seven seven one. Phone number three four zero eight seven seven one. Penfield.org on the homepage and live meeting video.
Homepage, live video.
Yeah, when the Zoom page went red, I said, let's, let's hold on a second. Did you see that? You saw that on this one too?
It was almost like looking at a photographic negative.
We're doing good. We gotta run.
Let me turn it on. My, my collar coming out.
I hear you. Testing myself, one, two, three, four.
Testing myself, one, two, three, four.
I still got that delay coming through, Dave.
Still got that delay coming through, Dave.
Okay. You got that, didn't you?
Yeah, I can see the board members pretty well. I can see Matt.
I can see the board members pretty well. I can see Matt.
You didn't miss anything. Been a while since you had to take your own intermission?
Ever.
No.
Never.
Come on.
Ever. He blew it. First time for everything.
Anything coming in or no?
Try to get there.
All right, testing one, two, three, four. Yeah, I think he got it, Dave.
He got it, Dave.
Okay, let's bring it back.
Bring it back.
There's Jim Burton.
To Jim. Jim, how you looking there? Good? Jim, how you looking there? Good?
Yeah, everything looks good to me.
Okay, so I think now we are at the phase of board questions and.
Let's open it up.
Board questions and.
So Jim, if you want to get started again, maybe start from the beginning. Start from the beginning.
Yeah, so what I, what I wanted to say was, I'm very pleased to see that the changes in the plan. Because even without the prohibition from DEC, I'm not sure that the town was ready to, to move ahead with all these individual ejector pumps. And even more pleased to hear that the additional boring logs and test pits that you did found that you can get all of the basements up above the bedrock. I hope, I hope the construction team is, is aware of just how difficult it is during periods of soil saturation to keep water out of the basements parts of Penfield. It's, it's, it's really been a source spat for a lot of our residents. Other than that, I think it looks great.
Okay. Anyone else from the board have comments or questions?
I'm, I'm all set, AJ.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good too, AJ.
Okay, I heard Bob say he's good. Terry?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Matt, just my question, you're proposing lighting at both intersection entrances, correct? Matt?
Yep, I'm here, sorry. Yeah, it's our understanding that the town desires to have the intersection, intersections lighted. We do have a current request in for gas and electric service with RGE. They're going to start their design as soon as we can get signatures on the plans. And having lights at those intersections as part of the URD installation will be part of that request.
Okay, what about the intersection internally with cul-de-sac? Will there be anything there?
There was not a plan to install one there currently.
And I also see you're proposing to put sidewalks on one side of the road.
That's correct. And we're in the process of requesting district extensions as well as a sidewalk waiver from the town board, which should happen in the very near future, assuming a successful planning board approval.
Okay. The other question I have, I'm looking at, looks like four lots on the southwest portion where it appears there's a conservation easement very close to the back of the house. Can you speak to that and how big will those backyards be?
Sure. I'm gonna switch over to the actual set of subdivision plans, AJ, just so I can take a look a little bit closer at where that falls.
Sure.
And you said the southwest corner of the property?
Yeah, so it looks to me, and I probably should get some reading glasses, but it's either lot thirty-one through thirty-five? Or is it fifty-one through fifty-five?
Are you looking at the ones on the south side of the road?
Okay.
Oh. In circle. Um, yeah, Matt, he's looking at.
So north is to the right, so.
Rolling Green Drive.
Hopefully, if I've done my job right, that's there enough for them. Sorry? Who at this? So, this is the southwest most portion, close to Jackson Road.
Matt, he's, he's looking at the lots on the main road, and it does look like lots fifty-three through fifty-six. On your colored rendering is what he's looking at.
Yes. No, great question. Yeah, so one of the, one of the questions that we received or one of the things that the home builder has shared with us is that they have a market for a certain number of lots within a typical project that reduces or keeps the wooded nature of the backyard without clearing a significant amount of it. So, the conservation easement actually follows along the rear of the property lines, which is somewhat hidden by the aerial underneath it. So, those backyards will go the same depth as the remainder of the lots in that area. I'm just zooming in here so you can see it a little bit clearer. So that conservation easement and the, the yard itself is the full depth of the remainder of the neighboring lots, but we've reduced the clearing limit. One of the engineering comments that we had requested a minimum of forty feet from the rear of the house to accommodate decks or patios and that kind of thing. So that is one of the revisions that we will be making for the final signed plans that come to the engineering folks.
Okay, so that, that's forty feet to the, to the first tree, so you clear forty feet? Or forty feet back to a conservation easement?
Nope, it's forty feet to the clearing limit. We have a minimum eighty-foot depth from the rear of the house on all lots to a conservation easement or a rear yard swale.
Okay.
So you'd have a wooded area before you hit the boundary of the conservation easement?
That's correct. The conservation, the conservation easement is at the rear of the lot. That is correct.
I, I'd keep the trees there unless the homeowner didn't want them myself. That's my, my personal viewpoint on that. I'm, I'm not a big fan of this.
Matt, you have the grading plan for that area?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, so to AJ's point, in, in this area, we're setting the rear of the house essentially on existing grade. And we have daylighted elevation at the back of that, which allowed us to not grade in that area, which allowed us to not clear the trees. So I can definitely switch to that so you can see that.
Okay. Done good then.
So you can, you can see here, we label these as partial walkouts. They're about four feet lower, so you can fit a window in for your lower area. And our grading limit is this dash and dot line right at the rear of the houses. So we're not clearing outside of those, at least that's what's proposed currently.
Okay. Terry, you have a question?
Yeah, Matt, Terry Titing, I just got one question for you, please. Regarding the traffic concerns, anything we should be aware of? The Monroe County DOT speaking with you guys regarding that, because I believe it's what, four, four stop signs at that location right outside the development?
That's correct. The intersection at Jackson and Plank is a four-way stop. We have measured site distances at each of the roadway locations and addressed. Uh, we have measured site distances at each of the roadway locations and addressed first round of comments with County DOT relative to roadway intersections, site distances, and, uh, there was no need for any type of follow-up with, um, traffic counts or, uh, any other comments of concern from them.
Thank you.
All right. So I'd like to open it up for public comment. We have none at the moment. If anyone would like to comment, please call three, four, zero, eight, seven, seven, one. And the folks downstairs will patch you in. Or alternatively, you can go online, penfield.org. Click on that live meeting video, and you can sub, you can submit a comment electronically. Zach had a comment.
Thank you, AJ. Matt, I have, um, while we're taking public comments and awaiting any, um, can you explain for the board, um, the revised drainage plans with your three stormwater management facilities? And the existing wetlands, um, what changes have been done? Which way is the water flowing? We have received comments from neighbors, um, about what to expect there, and I was hoping you could just highlight that as part of these revised plans.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, our first rendition of, uh, the drainage plan, so the drainage patterns are primarily two drainage areas through the site. There's a high point or a ridge essentially dividing the drainage areas where my cursor is following on a diagonal. The southern and western portion of the site drain to two federal wetlands that then are conveyed under Jackson Road in two twelve-inch storm sewers. There's a state wetland off-site and across the road that that twelve-inch ultimately gets to. So there's approximately, I believe it's thirty-five acres drain to that point. And so our proposed drainage pattern follows that exact same pattern by taking off the same amount of roadway, slightly less, to a stormwater management facility that discharges to the same federal wetland. We don't want to, uh, cut off drainage from a wetland that would dry it out, so we are mimicking using drainage flows, slightly reducing or to comply with town requirements, that then follow the same drainage path. The remaining portion of the property primarily drains to federal wetland in a Class C stream that's conveyed in over underneath Plank Road to the north, and that crosses the road right where my cursor is. And so in the initial rendition, we have a constraint through the site of a large Monroe County Water Authority concrete, uh, transmission main, and so our first rendition had a stormwater management facility that was primarily located at the rear of the lots. On the side, on the southern side of that transmission line, because it was difficult to get the volume of water across that transmission line. What that did was a couple of things that, uh, I think that the new, uh, design answers very well. Number one, it discharged the stormwater upstream of the wetland, uh, originally. And what that did is, when we, uh, design stormwater management facilities, they're designed to reduce the rate of flow off from a site. But the overall volume of water ends up being greater, it's just released over a longer period of time. And so that greater volume due to the wetland and the very flat nature through this stream, the additional volume had the potential to increase the amount of water that was stored in that federal wetland before it migrated off-site. And so that had a potential, uh, downside of adding more water to a neighboring property, even though we were in compliance with all of the DEC guidelines, that additional volume of water had a potential to impact a neighbor. So I think the relocation of that has a benefit. The second benefit is access to these ponds on the town lands was going to be difficult, requiring either progress through two closely spaced houses or a longer travel time in case of emergency for town staff to get to those stormwater management facilities. So our proposed solution is, uh, I think works very well. Um, this stormwater management facility C is the primary quantity or the large holding facility for stormwater, and the outlet is now located directly off of Plank Road, and we will be constructing a small access drive to that outlet control structure for ease of maintenance and access for town staff. Our stormwater management facility B is really our water quality component of this, and in widening the area around the transmission line, that is now much easier, more easily accessible by town staff as well. In addition, as I mentioned, we don't want to cut off water from a wetland. And so what this small split in splitting quantity, and I'll just explain very briefly, our storm sewer comes down into a four bay that in small storm events overflows into our stormwater management facility and then to the wetland. In large storm events, that same volume of water goes to the wetland to ensure that we are not cutting off drainage and maintaining the wetland. We're limiting the amount or the volume of water that goes in that direction, thereby protecting the neighbor's property and limiting that to better-than-existing conditions. And then in large storm events, there's an overflow that in a line channel that takes it down to the stormwater management facility. That's kind of a, a long explanation, but essentially, to summarize that, we're maintaining existing drainage patterns, making it easier for town staff to maintain those ponds, and also ensuring that, uh, there's no impact to the neighbors by any of those treatment methods.
Much, Matt.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Okay, thanks, Matt. All right, we have a phone call on hold. Phone call on hold. This is my first time playing Larry King. My first time, very excited about.
Hello caller.
So we have Stephen Cushman, eleven fifty-two and eleven fifty-four Plank Road on the line, and downstairs, if we could, uh, patch him through, that would be terrific.
Okay, this is Steve Cushman at eleven fifty-two and eleven. First question that I have tonight, uh, has it was indicated that it might be flowing north and the town of Webster is at the free of charge? I'm being a little facetious, but is it flowing north and is Webster accepting it?
Okay, so if I could, we, we had a, a little bit of an echo, Steve.
All night long, everything you say is coming through double.
That, that's what we're hearing too.
That's what we're hearing as well.
Okay.
So what I think you said is that you had a question about store, uh, sewer going into Webster? And was that free of charge?
Yes, is the sewer going to the? Hard B would be if they are accepting it, are they doing this free of charge?
I don't believe it's free, but those are questions. If you could possibly go online and submit a comment electronically, staff will get back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
I had two other questions. I mean, are sales also electronically?
If you don't mind doing that, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
The, the echo is almost unbearable.
Well, again, this is what we're listening to at home tonight. Uh, so we got some improvements we have to make to this.
To the system.
Right.
Yeah, we're, we agree, we're doing the best we can.
Okay.
This is, this is the first time you actually may be the first person to call in to the town.
Oh, really?
So you could brag to all your friends.
To the town hall, too.
All right, Mr. Cushman, thank you for the call.
You're welcome. Good night now.
Good night. All right. We don't have any other phone calls on hold. Not seeing any electronic submissions. As in the first application, we will hold the public comment period open for seven days. So if you have any comments, please visit penfield.org and submit your comments electronically. Thank you, Matt. With no further questions from the board, and I will go through and verify. Bastian, are you good?
I'm all set.
Canower?
Yep.
Burton?
All set.
Titings?
Yes, sir, all set.
Okay, we'll call this portion of the hearing closed.
I'm set, thank you.
Matt, thank you. Have a good night. And we will move.
Two, thank you very much.
We'll move on to the last application of the evening. I'm wondering if we should take a five-minute recess to try to get this echo fixed.
Okay, so Rudy and Amy, hold on. We were so close.
These things happen. Back live, hopefully, after some technical reboots. And Zach, please go ahead and read the third application.
There it is. Okay, application number three, our final public hearing of the evening, BME Associates, Ten Lift Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, one, four, four, five, zero, on behalf of Insight Land Development, request under chapter two fifty, articles six dash six point one, eleven dash eleven point two, twelve dash, and twelve dash twelve point two of the code of the town of Penfield for preliminary final subdivision, site plan, and EPOD permit approval to construct a twenty-lot, single-family subdivision under Town Law two seventy-eight with associated site improvements on a thirteen-point-two-six acre lot located at nineteen eighteen Jackson Road. And to be known as, well, initially this was written as Evergreen Estates, it is now known as Stafford Park Subdivision. The properties now are formerly owned by Benno and Sylvia Dumay and Zoned Single Family Residential R one twenty. Application number twenty P dash zero, 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 five, S B L number one, two, four point one, six, dash, one point, dash, three, nine, point, three. And Amy and Rudy and Fred and Martin, the floor is yours. Uh, Amy, I know you have a presentation ready, so if you want to open that up or, uh, let Rudy have an intro first before, never mind, here it comes. And when this power, when this is ready, Rudy, the floor is yours.
Actually, I'd like to interrupt for one second. This is AJ. For those of you watching and interested in commenting on this application, I would encourage you to log on to penfield.org and submit your comments electronically. We will try phone calls after we're through with this, so feel free to try to call. The first call that came in, we ran into some technical difficulties with echoing and sound coming through twice. It was very, very challenging to, for the caller to hear and understand, and for us to hear and understand. We are interested in getting We are interested in getting public feedback. And if you can just go on Penfield.org, click on the live video, live meeting video, and submit your comments electronically. That would be much appreciated. Okay, Rudy, thanks for your patience, and the floor is all yours.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ray Newfield. I work for Custom Homes, and I'd like to begin by thanking the board and the staff for all the work and effort. But I'd like to extend a added thank you for the tremendous amount of effort, work, and hours that went in to be able to hear our applications due to this COVID-19 situation and moving this technology. So, an added thank you for that. It's much appreciated, and we'll hopefully be able to continue working. So, thank you for that. Let me introduce, with my cross-country this evening, is Amy Wallace, who helped us prepare this presentation. She handles our sales and marketing and manages our construction department. Also, Mr. Fred Shelley, Martin Yanda, are representing us here from BME Associates. Proud to be represented by them on the inside for this project. And after a brief overview, and any questions that would like to be answered on my part, they will be available to help with any technical question that the board or the public has. If some of you may not be familiar with our projects, I would like to present a brief slideshow showing some of our projects. And if you would pay attention to the detail, the sense of arrival is very important to us as a developer. And the preservation of any nature that's there or nature that we can add is important. And it will be a very integral part of the project that we're proposing and are very excited about. So, we're going to show you just a few slides to give you an idea of some of our projects. Thank you, Amy, for those slides. And any questions that might pop up, we'll be happy to answer. And now, we'd like to present just a brief, a few slides of the property owners. They are very, this land is very special to them. And we thought we'd pay tribute. They've worked this farm, I believe, over 35 or 40 years. And so, we'd like to show you just a few slides that were important and meaningful to the DuMay family. So, please watch. Thank you, Amy, again, for those slides. We appreciate it. Although it won't continue to be a tree farm, it is our goal, as we've discussed with staff and the engineers, that we will be transplanting as many of these trees that are transplantable and incorporating them into our treescape, our landscaping, our entrance berms and monumentation. So, although all the trees won't stay, a tribute to all the work that the DuMay's have put in, some of the trees will continue to be part of this beautiful project, Stafford Park, for many, many decades to come. A brief overview of the technical side of our project. It will be serviced by San and Tener Sewer. There will be a stormwater retention facility that will be shared with the town of Penfield. We'll have more details for that. Serviced by our engineer and all the necessary utilities that will be there. We'll now show a slide of the overlay of the development. And I will be happy to answer any non-technical questions that the board or the public may have and turn it over at the appropriate time to our engineering staff.
Yeah, thank you, Rudy. Fred Shelley from BME. If you wouldn't mind, and if the board would appreciate it, we'll just throw in some of our technical comments at this time. Am I coming through the microphone?
Yep, I can hear you loud and clear. AJ?
Yes. Yes, you're good.
Very good. Thank you very much. Again, Fred Shelley and Martin Yanda from BME Associates. As Rudy had mentioned, this is a 20-lot subdivision proposal. We're seeking preliminary and final approval under the cluster provisions through the Town Code. And basically, just to kind of bring the town up to speed, we included it in our letter of intent. Some of the benefits that we see this development providing is an increased setback from the development to Jackson Road. We can push a lot of these homes further away. We're able to increase buffering from Jackson Road. And actually, also around the perimeter of the site, the south and west side of the sites, we're able to capture and retain a lot of those existing evergreen plantings out there by limiting the footprint of the development. Down in the lower right corner that you see, we're retaining a lot of the plantings, existing trees in that area where otherwise would be used for a stormwater treatment system. We're able to reduce impervious areas through driveway reduction, reduction of the front setbacks of the area. Additionally, flag lots have been eliminated through this layout, which would otherwise be lean to toward with the conventional layout. We're also looking, and we've proposed improvements to the existing town stormwater facility, which is between the development and Pondview Drive to the, to the east of the site, which includes increasing the existing facility that currently provides little to no water quality volume per the current state regulations. We're providing additional water quality treatment volume within the existing facility as well as enhancing some to accommodate the proposed project's increase in impervious areas. Another benefit with utilizing the town's regional stormwater facility is that ultimately, it'll be one facility for the town to maintain as opposed to two facilities side by side. So, that'll ease some of the maintenance when the town takes over these, these facilities. And then, lastly, with the, in regard to the clustering, as I had mentioned before, we are able to save a lot more of the perimeter buffer trees around the existing property to the greatest extent possible. Coming back into the project specifically, we did present this as a concept plan review to the planning board at the February 13th Planning Board Meeting. We received comments from the board and listened to some of the comments from the public and incorporated some of those with our preliminary and final submission to the planning board. We submitted full plan sets as well as an engineering report to the town as part of the application. The engineer's report does address the site access. We have sufficient site distance to the proposed roadway. And then, also, with a little more coordination with the town, we also provided some trip generation calculations just for the planning board's consideration. For instance, the AM peak hour of the adjacent road that we're coming onto, Jackson Road, we anticipate about 15 trips, which include 11 exiting or entering the site. And then, in the PM peak hour, we're looking at about a total of 20 during that hour timeframe with 12 entering the site, eight exiting the site. Water supply was touched on a little bit. We'll be looking to connect to existing Monroe County Water Authority facilities on Jackson Road, extending them into the site. Sanitary will be through an extension from Pondview Lane through the stormwater facility, actually, through an sanitary sewer extension connection to existing facilities. The storm sewer, we touched on that briefly. Proposing enhancements to the existing facility, which will increase the water quality volume. Another thing with our calculations that we've provided the town is we've been able to show that we've been able to provide an overall reduction in the peak storm, analyzed storm runoff rates that are exiting this facility through this development by increasing the volume within the facility. We'll be increasing a bit of a wet pool area adjacent to the site. You can see it on the slide here directly, east of the site. The blue highlighted area there is where our wet pool will be. That'll provide the water quality requirements for the site as well as additional or the, any other areas coming into the facility. Basically, so the design has been set forth to meet the New York State DUC and the town stormwater requirements for reducing the post-development flows down to their specific code and/or permit requirements as well. Also, just to be noted, this, the proposed revisions to this facility, the town facility, were presented to the town board by the applicant March 11th. And the town board granted approval for the applicant to proceed with the design for the improvements and use of the regional facility for the, our site. We did receive several PRC comments, primarily technical in nature. We've been able to respond to those, send them to the town in a letter.
We lost your audio, Fred.
Sorry, Fred. I think my ear got a little tired. Where did you hear, hear last?
About 10 seconds ago. You left off with, you know, the town board's approval on March 11th, and then the line after that.
Okay, yeah, and then basically, so that was the town board's approval. We had received PRC comments. We addressed them by letter on May 7th. And then, followed up with town staff on that. We're fairly comfortable that we'll be able to address any of those comments sufficiently to obtain approval through the town staff. So, with that, I'm happy to entertain any additional questions or comments.
Okay. Rudy, throughout back to you. Are you all set? Are you?
Yes, I'm set. I'm happy to answer any questions I'm capable of answering, or Martin, or Fred as well.
Okay. Terry, you want to start?
Terry Tidings here, Rudy, Fred, Amy. Thanks for your patience tonight. Just a couple of quick questions. Sidewalks, what's the plan on the sidewalks, Rudy?
We've discussed that with staff, and we are going to ask for a waiver. We all discussed it. It's a cul-de-sac. It's a dead end. So, we are going to get a number from the staff. We will be contributing that amount of money into the Jackson Road sidewalk fund. And then, of course, the determination of when that would be built would rest on the town and the public. Thank you for that question.
What about the, I understand there's a existing storage structure on the property. What are you going to do with that one?
There is, it's Mr. DuMay's little barn that he used. Our thought was, a couple of options the staff gave us. I will be very happy to, with their permission, I don't know if they'd be talking, going through the application in public appearance, but with their permission, I will be happy to walk them through a variance with the town staff. And then, he can keep his little barn, his tractors in there, some of his tools, et cetera. I know that's very important to him, so I'll be happy to do that for him. If there is, he can keep his little barn.
Okay, so your plan is to go before the zoning?
Yes, if they would like to do that, I will do that only as a representative of Mr. DuMay.
I was out there, but I couldn't find it, actually. What was, what's the condition of that storage structure?
It's wood. It's a tight wood barn. It still looks decent. You know, it's older. It's got a wood floor, so it's, it needs a little. But the outside, it looks nice, and it's still important to him. So, I'll be happy to work with them to grant this variance to the property line, so he can keep it.
Thank you. What about the buffering and tree preservation techniques that you guys are going to utilize over there?
Yeah, I mentioned that a little bit. There's probably, I didn't count every one of them, but there's probably around 25 to 30 trees that are under 10 feet that our big equipment can move. So, it can then involve a little bit more technical work. Instead of clearing it, moving the soil, we're going to do it in phases. As one section is filled, we'll be moving the trees as we go. A good number of them will be used as a preservation on the west property, west side of the road along his property line. So, he'll be able to take advantage of the buffer and see his trees. And any other remaining trees will be spotted throughout the development to keep that tree farm preservation. So, we'll still be adding some deciduous trees. And we believe that the Stafford Park look will be very mature and stately once we're completed.
Great. Any signage for the track, or no?
Yep, we'll have a entrance. I do have, we won't go over the slide, but we use the same sign logo, Stafford Park. There'll be some lighting to it, some plantings around it. And there'll be a nice landscape buffer along Jackson Road, along that first lot. About a six-foot-tall buffer with some of the original trees, some additional planting, some rockscaping. So, we will have a beautiful sense of arrival, which is extremely important to us.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm all set.
Okay. Anyone else from the board have questions?
Rudy? Yeah, this is, this is Bob. I have one question. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, the cul-de-sac, the center of the cul-de-sac, is that going to be a landscaped area? Could you describe that, please? Thanks.
Yes, I can. I also have some photographs to show. I know that the town is not favorable to that. The board did do it in our latest development at Abington Place. We did a landscaped cul-de-sac. The issue that the town faces is who's going to take care of it. We think we have solved that. We put a deed restriction into a particular lot. For example, in this one slide you're looking at, the last house, that they are responsible to take care of it. We just put together a really nice one. I don't know if Fred can bring that slide up or not. In the town of Grease, we did a cul-de-sac. It was done with cobbles, pine trees, and lighting, and it really looked beautiful. That would be the restriction for Lot 12, and that particular development would take care of it, pay the utilities, so that the lights can stay on. So, we are big fans of it. It's more expensive for us to initially put it in. But a beautiful development like this with a 60-foot piece of asphalt that ends up to be, in the wintertime, full of snow and salt and gravel, it never really looks good. So, we're going to try to see if we can convince the town that it will not be a headache. It will be deed restricted to a homeowner. And we think the aesthetic value of that is going to be extremely important to the development. So, of course, we'll defer to the staff's final thoughts, but we'll make our best case to let that be done, and we'll show some nice illustrations if we can.
Okay, thank you, Rudy.
You're very welcome. Fred, are we able to show those Grease slides that I sent you?
I apologize, Rudy. That's on the other competing, you have in the basement of the house. My other office is out there. We can certainly provide that to town staff and the planning board for the reference.
Okay, I think Bastian, you had a question? Bill?
Yeah, mine's just out of curiosity, but I was, Rudy, what is the price point of the homes you're going to build?
I won't get too complicated with that answer, but the price of the home is driven by the- by the cost of the land and the cost of the development. So these homes will be probably starting in the low to mid 400.
Okay.
And that's driven by the cost of the land. It's really a factor of 20%. So five times in these lots will be extremely expensive to develop. There's some cost involved in the off-site, but there's also some benefits to us, so it was a win-win for everyone. Using the town facility for drainage was able to drop our static water level by, I think, almost 26 or 28 inches, which is a huge benefit to all of our surrounding neighborhood. Even though the house prices will have to be higher, we at the area and the nature merits it, and we think it's going to be a spectacular development.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
At this point, what I'd like to do is open it up to the public, and I do have some submitted comments. There's a few folks who submitted some comments electronically, and I will go through my screen and read them. If somebody has the courage to call up and try another time, we are definitely game to give it a shot. So that number, once again, is 340-8771. Okay, so the first comment that I see on the screen here is from Christina Emmering. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. At 79 Thorn Tree Circle in Penfield, the comment is, "What will builder do in regards to drainage issues and mitigating these issues for surrounding area?" Now, just to be clear, we're reading the comments, we're submitting them for the public record, and we'll get answers as best we can for you, but we may not be able to answer every question here. So that's Christina Emmering. Okay, another comment we have, also from Christina at 79 Thorn Tree in Penfield. Why change the name from Evergreen Estates to Stafford? Comment from Jeff Patrick, 1014 Wayland Road in Penfield. And this comment is, "This development is very disappointing to our neighborhood. This portion of Jackson Extension is very narrow. This will affect traffic on Jackson Extension itself as well as traffic merging onto Wayland Road. Traffic can be bad on Wayland at the peak travel times heading toward the four-way intersection. It would be better if the subdivision would empty onto Jackson instead of Jackson Extension. The whole development is not great for the area." So I think, I think there's a mistake here. The development does empty onto Jackson, the original Jackson Road, not Jackson Road Thank you for the comment. Another comment from Christina Emmering, 79 Thorn Tree. If build is approved in terms of providing privacy to existing homeowners, I would like to see the marking and saving of trees that border properties. For example, the houses on Thorn Tree, keeping those trees that would border their backyards. Will the builder take these actions? Next comment, Tina Edmire, 78 Thorn Tree Circle. Why the name change? Evergreen name was perfectly suited, why Stafford? Also from Tina Edmire, 78 Thorn Tree Circle. Where are you getting the numbers with regards to cars entering and exiting? What are these statistics based on? Also, another comment from Tina, 78 Thorn Tree Circle. No sidewalks. Will the funds of not building go towards a sidewalk on Jackson Road if the neighbors petition to get one and the majority rules to want one? So that's a question for our sidewalk committee, sidewalk...
Engineering department.
I'm not sure exactly how the town board determines that.
I can explain it if you want.
Go ahead, Zach.
The petition process, one, if the town board determines to, grants a waiver for this, the funds calculated for it, which is set by our sidewalk policy, we go into our sidewalk fund. There have been discussions, but no decisions yet as to whether or not there would be a dedicated Jackson Road sidewalk fund. However, we do have a general sidewalk fund that gets allocated every year to install new sidewalks in the town of Penfield. We currently have projects budgeted for this year, next year, potentially the next few years, but it is important if your neighborhood does want sidewalks, you can work with the town engineer, the engineering department, to gather a petition that has at least 75% of the homeowners that have frontage that a sidewalk would be installed on. You have their support documented in a petition, and that gets presented to the town board. And then you go through that petition process with them. Ultimately, if it gets on the list and you get through the waiver process, I'm sorry, the request process, eventually a timeline is put in place. I just cannot tell you when and how fast that happens. Clearly, there are a lot of moving parts in it, but there is a petition process, and the best way to start is working with the engineering department.
Okay, thank you, Zach. There's one more comment from Tina. And Tina Edmire at 78 Thorn Tree Circle. What experience do Crosstown have with transplanting trees? What if the transplants don't work? Will they replace the trees? Okay, so those are all the comments that we have currently. Rudy and your team, if you could possibly answer some of these questions, it would be terrific. Let's start with the name change from Evergreen Estates to Stafford.
It was decided with the staff. We look at a lot of things, a lot of information, a lot of name choices, and Stafford Park, we thought, of course, Evergreen fits it, but we thought for the subdivision, the price point, that was the decision that was made by the entire Crosstown team, and so that is going to be the name as filed.
Privacy to existing homeowners. Comment made, "I would like to see the marking and saving of trees that border properties. For example, the houses on Thorn Tree, keeping those trees that would border their backyards. Will the builder take these actions?" Can you comment on the tree comments? If you would, please?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, I'd be happy to do that, and Fred, Martin can add if they'd like. There will not be any deed restrictions or filed conservation easements on private property. However, when we clear the property, we will be leaving a minimum of 20-foot buffer and in some selected areas even greater than that. So the first declaration that the neighbors will see, and I'm always available to answer questions or do sidewalks with anyone that would like, the engineers will be clearly marking the clearing limits, and we will stay out of those. It's the only thing that might happen within that buffer of 20 feet to keep our privacy, which is good for our neighbors and certainly good for our future homeowners. If there's a dead tree or a fallen tree or a dangerous one, we can do select clearing of those. But that, at least 20-foot and places greater, buffer will be preserved.
Okay. We also have a new comment, also from Tina Edmire, 78 Thorn Tree Circle. Will Crosstown encourage buyers to keep buffering? That kind of...
Yes.
Leads to...
Yep, if I may, absolutely we will. There's a benefit to, as I mentioned, the neighbors benefit from it, and our future buyers will benefit from it. Now, a future buyer may say, "I don't like this particular tree," or something like that, and they have the right to do that, just like our adjoining neighbors have the right to take down a tree or plant a tree on private property. But in our experience, all my developments, any nature can preserve that looks good and is aesthetically pleasing, that those people will keep.
Okay. How about, "Where are you getting the numbers with regards to cars entering and exiting? What are these statistics based on?"
I'll turn that right over to Fred if you're still on.
Fred, can you hear?
Yep, okay. I'm on, sorry. Problem with the muting. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the figures that I represented are based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers' software and their calculation for residential, single-family homes. That information has been provided at town staff, so I believe it probably would be available for any of the public that would like to view that. But those numbers are generated based on the, as I said, Institute of Traffic Engineers' accepted calculation equations.
Is that the accepted standard throughout the state or the country for these types of things, Institute of Traffic Engineers?
Yes, that is the standard for estimating peak trip generation through the area, I believe it's. Yes, it's the general, overall accepted numbers, yes.
Okay. Okay, another comment from Tina Edmire, 78 Thorn Tree Circle. The build is a disappointment to the neighborhood. This has been difficult for surrounding neighbors to come to terms with, and now you have a name to reflect the so-called value of the houses in a neighborhood where the house value is around $150,000. Also from Tina, 78 Thorn Tree Circle. Has a traffic study been performed on Jackson Road prior to COVID?
I can answer that, AJ. Our engineering department, well, we don't perform traffic studies, we do traffic counts of areas to understand the number of cars at different times of the day as well as the speeds that they're traveling. We were planning to put traffic counters down in this area prior to COVID pandemic breaking out and causing this change to all of our lives and the daily volumes of traffic on all of our roads. Or we do have previous data for that road, I believe. It's something we can confirm. But this is why we asked the developers to run trip generation numbers using the I T E standards that they provided to give us an expectation based on development as well. But off the top of my head, I don't have numbers of what we have, is something we can look into, but it's something our engineering department does perform regularly.
Okay. We have a caller on hold, a brave soul named Tom, I believe it's Tom Gogger, 11 Square Circle. And Tom, say hello and introduce yourself and ask your questions, or please feel free to comment.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tom Gogger. I live at 11 Square Circle in Penfield. I was at the last meeting, one of the first questions I have is, when are previous concerns going to be addressed and/or advertised to the neighborhood so that they know that things have been discussed and have been quantified in some way, shape, or form, that they've been considered and were resolved or rejected or whatever the disposition is? For instance, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that anybody that lives in that neighborhood knows that there is a daycare at the church. That daycare center is constantly walking kids, little toddlers, up and down Jackson Road. And if you're adding an additional 20, 30 cars at certain times of day, that's going to generate a dangerous situation. No ifs, ands, or buts. Because the speed limit up and down through there is supposedly 35, but I guarantee you, anybody that lives there will tell you that you get cars doing 50 up and down through there all the time. So something, more than just a simple car count needs to be done. You need to take into consideration the fact that there, again, there are no sidewalks, and therefore you've got bicycles, you've got people walking young kids up and down through there, you've got people taking dogs up and down through there. So it's a potential dangerous situation that you're adding significantly more traffic on the road.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I've got one other comment here to make.
Sure.
And that is that, again, all the neighborhood has mentioned in the previous time, all the wildlife that travels between the Thousand Acre Swamp Woods, that's over between Bear Road, Jackson Road, and, you know, heads over towards the Thousand Acre Swamp. As a matter of fact, right now, because my backyard is a travel point of lots of wildlife going over towards the Evergreen area, there is a band of deer that are now traveling up and down through the area, and there's also a young family of fox that are up and through that area as well. Because they're in my backyard right now. As a matter of fact, if I got up and looked, I'd be all in the best they're in my backyard. So the question comes, you know, what is going to be done to mitigate the wildlife? And I think as somebody had mentioned earlier on something that I read, that if you're going to essentially take their habitat away, you're going to end up with all these fox and deer and stuff in people's front yards, chewing on bushes and stuff as opposed to, you know, going to natural areas which don't exist anymore. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much for the call.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, okay, we have another electronic comment from Tina Edmire at 78 Thorn Tree Circle. Are you putting a traffic counter on Jackson? When was the last count done? How long is traffic count set up for? That's something that the engineering department can answer. Probably not prepared to do that right now, but that is, that is something that I believe can be answered. Okay. So thank you, everyone, for your comments. As in the previous two applications, we will keep this public comment period open for the next seven days. And please feel free to log on to...
Contact us.
Contact the planning department at...
Planning@penfield.org.
Planning@penfield.org. And address your comments, refer to... And, uh, address your comments, refer to this application. And thank you very much for watching. With that, uh, Rudy, if you have any final comments, um, feel free, or we will call the hearing closed.
No, I just, I would just say again, thank you to the board and staff, uh, for the tremendous amount of effort to be able to hear this application. Uh, myself, the BME folks, uh, will be available for anything else that, uh, any of the commenters or the staff needs. Thank you again for your...
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Uh, like I said...
Thank you very much.
We'll call this hearing closed. We will be accepting public comments for the next seven days. Uh, thank you all for your patience tonight. This is, uh, first time for us going through this virtual public meeting. It's, uh, been a trying time for everyone. And, uh, I think I still have the, uh, planning board here. We need to...
Keep them.
...uh, quickly go through and, um, table the applications that have been presented before us tonight, um, so that we can make them official.
Before you do that, Rudy and Fred, you guys are all set. Um, you can leave the meeting now, we're gonna conduct a work session with the board. If you guys, you guys can also, uh, just turn your video and, um...
Yeah, turn off your video and audio if you want to stay on the call.
Yeah, you guys can continue to watch the meeting, but you just have to turn your video and audio off.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we're still, still together. Can I get a, uh, quick, uh, verification? Burton, you still there? Okay, Burton's here. Uh, Bastian?
I'm here.
Okay, Kenauer?
Here.
Tidings?
Here, sure.
All right. So, let's start, uh...
From the top or go backwards?
Let's go, uh, start from the top.
All right.
And I wanna give the public opportunity to, uh, keep submitting comments. So anything that you have that is, uh, top of mind, um, feel free, but I'd...
Yeah.
Table these for the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, guys, I'll, I'll keep it short. Um, like AJ said, if there's something, I'm gonna go through each one, again, just by the topic, I'm not gonna go in depth on it, because, uh, there's a lot of information tonight. Um, thank you for hanging with us. Um, but if there is an immediate thought that sticks out to you, that you want an answer for a project, please let me know as we go through it. Um, we will get that from the applicant, along with any public comments that come in, start collecting those, and prepare all of this for the work session on the 28th of this month. Um, with that being said, for Starbucks, um, other than entertaining a motion to table, um, pending any additional public comments, uh, and the information they were going to provide on the phasing of how this layout came to be, along with the traffic information they have, um, is there anything else the board requests? I see, Jim?
Yeah, I really think we need to wait until we see all of the comments before we, uh, before we make recommendations to, uh, the staff on these, uh, applications.
Yep, that's the plan.
Yes, that is the plan. Bob? You good?
I'm set with the information, yes.
Okay, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Motion.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to table, um, application number one, the Starbucks.
Bastian? I'll move the table.
Okay, do we have a second?
Tidings, second's that motion.
So Bastian moved, Tidings second. Lori, you still with us?
I am.
All right.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
And Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Application number two. Forest Ridge, Plankton, Jackson.
Yep, just a update for you guys, they did, again, they did only provide written responses. Uh, they wanted to wait for this meeting to take place before providing revised plans, so they are gonna be working on that between now and your next meeting, along with, as we said earlier, the receipt of any additional public comments.
Okay, can I entertain a motion to table?
Move.
So Burton moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
That was a close one, even with the hands.
Second from Kenauer. Lori, you wanna call the vote?
Sure. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
And Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, we have five ayes for tabling that. Item three.
Tidings will make the motion to table, unless you have something further, Zach?
Uh, they're in the same ballpark as the previous one. We are, uh, awaiting revised plans on this, again, to collect comments. Um, we will work on staff's end to see what we have on traffic counts. It may or may not even be in our records at this point, it may not have been done, um, in the years, years past of, uh, what we've been doing this for, uh, that we've been conducting them, so, um, we'll see what we have, and, uh, if there's anything else that the board requests, we'll get that.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table from, uh, Tidings, do we have a second?
I'll second, Bastian will second.
Okay, Lori?
Okay, Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye, thank you.
Okay, that's five ayes for that being tabled. With that, do we have any, uh, last minute items on the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you all for your patience, thank you all for coming. Those of you who've tuned in and hung with us tonight, we appreciate, um, your patience and you sticking with us. This is a new adventure for all of us, and we're, we're all doing the best we can. So, uh, with that, we will adjourn, and, uh, hope everyone has a great rest of your evening, a great weekend in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Penfield TV.
See you later.
Thanks, AJ.